Good evening and welcome to the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one meeting of the Yorktown Zone Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine, I chair the board, I'm just getting some instructions for everybody. Before we begin, let me tell you who's present tonight on the board. Myself, Gordon Fine, Chairman, we have Bob Fahey, John Maestrick, Anthony Tripodi, Bill Gregory, our alternate Howard Orneck, our Recording Secretary Glenda Daly, our Special Counsel Adam Rodriguez, and the Building Inspector John Landy. Now, just a few housekeeping matters, the meeting is being broadcast live on Town Cable TV channels. If you would like to join and participate in the Zoom meeting, click the registration link in Town's website calendar page for this meeting. All meeting participants will remain without video and on mute until their item is called in order to simplify the view on the screen. Those joining by computer can use the chat function in Zoom to contact the meeting host, Robin, if needed. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the application, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the participants list or send a chat message to the host. You may request to speak or have the host read your comments or questions. Please do not speak until invited to do so by the chairman or host and identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're joining to Zoom by phone only, all phone calls will remain on mute in order to minimize background noise. Press star nine to raise your hand to the host to indicate you would like to speak. When you're invited to speak, please identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're watching this meeting on television and would like to comment on an item, you may call into the Zoom meeting using the phone number and meeting information shown in the host box on the screen. Remember to tell the host you'd like to comment, click the raise hand button on the button of the participants list, send the chat message to the host using the chat button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Next order of business is to address the minutes of last month's meeting. The minutes have been circulated to the board members, anybody have any comments about the minutes?
Wonderful job.
Okay. And I move that we approve the minutes of the February meeting, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next order of business is to set up next month's meeting. If your, if your application is being heard next month for the first time as in the hearing section of the, of the agenda, the meeting is being held April twenty second, six thirty P M., I'm assuming again on Zoom if otherwise notified. Your mailings must go out between March twenty ninth and April seventh. If they go out before March twenty ninth or after April seventh, we will not be able to open your hearing next month. In order to determine who you send your mailings to, you go to the town tax office, tell them you're doing a zoning board application. They'll ask you your address, they'll then show you the names and addresses of those parties you must send notices to. Write those names and addresses on the form provided to you in your zoning application process, package. Remember to post your sign on your property. When you send the mailings out, they must be sent by first-class mail, they do not have to be sent by certified mail, only first-class mail with certificate of mailing. That's simply a form filled out at the post office. The post office verifies that you mailed it to a certain person on a certain date. It only costs around a dollar instead of around five or six dollars for certified. So all you have to do is certificate of mailing. Mailings must be submitted to our legal secretary at Town Hall prior to the meetings that we can make sure everything's in order before the meeting starts. You also have to remember to submit your sign affidavit with a photograph of the sign on the, posted on the property along with the application. That being said, let's move along to our new business agenda.
First up is... On four twenty-two, that's Earth Day, do we all have to wear flowers that day?
Yeah, you can if you'd like.
Alright.
You do that, you do that. First on the agenda is Catalotti, Cataliotti, excuse me, for fifteen forty-three Hanover Street. Application renewal of the special use permit for accessory apartment is the applicant present? If not, we're just gonna handle this administratively, refer it to the building inspector and set it down for a public hearing, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ambarella, application for special use permit for a new accessory apartment at thirty sixty-one Oak Street. So that's a new application, so it's not handled administratively. We'll set it down for site visit, once again, the members do site visits on their own, we don't go in a group anymore, and we won't be entering the home, however, the building inspector still needs access to go inside to make sure that the house is in compliance. So we're also referring to the building inspector and set it down for a public hearing on the twenty-second, do you have a second?
Second. While we're on that topic, it's just a, just a question for verification, would it be feasible to do a, a video or if like, of, of the interior that we could get an idea as the apartment, is it necessary, but I mean, since we can't do an interior inspection?
Unless, unless you really have a, a dying question about what the inside of a place looks like, I don't have a problem relying upon the building inspector saying everything's okay.
Fair enough, okay, okay.
As long as it meets, as long as it meets the square footage requirement.
We do, we do do Zoom inspections right now, by then, I don't know if the supervisor's gonna open up where we can go out to the field and do inspections, but right now we're doing Zoom and we tape the Zooms. So if any of the board members wanna see it, come to my office, we have no problem showing it to you.
Make sure you only show them the Zoom of the inspection.
Yeah.
He knows what to hide if he fell by that end.
Bobby only asks for it.
I have to be good. Next on the agenda is Ndako. Application renewal of special use permit to operate a childcare center at three twenty-two Kier Street. This, I think, is a first-time renewal for them.
Oh, we have a public hearing on this as well?
No, we, uh, we, that's a different, that's a different application, Tony.
Different app, okay.
Yeah. So this one will handle administratively, but we'll refer to the billing department, planning department, fire marshal, and also request proof of insurance for the daycare center and set it down for a public hearing on the twenty-second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Flaws, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Application proposed addition of the side yard setback of twelve point oh seven feet or minimum fifteen is required, and a combined side yard setback of thirty-six point eight feet or minimum forty is required at twenty-seven ninety-six Sutton Street. Is the applicant present on that? Okay, we'll set it down for a site visit, refer it to the billing department, then public hearing on the twenty-second, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Little Red Schoolhouse. Application allow two freestanding signs where only one is permitted and allow a new sign for school within area of fifteen square feet or maximum four square feet is permitted. That's a twenty-three hundred compound road. We refer that to the billing department, planning department, and a BAC does set it down for site visit. If anybody's interested, I have a paint sample that I was handed, I'll put it up to the screen here, Hank, everybody can see the paint, paint sample. Just to have an idea, oh, you have one, we can put it all together and do our walls.
We can make a trip it out of it.
At the, yeah, at the end, at the end, we'll all have posters. Do you want the applicant?
Yes, do you like the color?
Looks fine to me as a poster, I don't know about a sign, we'll see.
Good, good.
We're gonna set it down for a site visit, of course, it's just a drive-by, no one has to be there. If you just could put our, put the zoning board sign if you can, if, if this is on, I assume it's gonna be on the front of the sign. But the sign is close to where your sign's going to be, so you have an idea where it's being posted.
Okay, yeah, no problem, we'll do.
Okay. And then we'll set that for public hearing on the twenty-second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking at my screen and I see a name, Howard Orneck. Is Howie out there in the audience?
He's out there. They almost didn't let him in.
Oh my gosh.
We had a decision to, to let him in.
Next is Gates. Application allow an existing structure with side yard setback of four point one feet or minimum of twelve is required, and front yard setback of twenty-seven point five feet or minimum of thirty is required, that's a thirty-four oh eight Hayward Street. Is the applicant here on that? Okay, we'll set this down for site visit, refer it to the billing department and public hearing on the twenty-second, do you have a second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trade. Application for proposed addition with combined side yard setback of twenty-nine point six feet or minimum forty is required at two fifty-seven Granite Springs Road. Okay, we'll set that down for site visit, refer it to the billing department and public hearing on the twenty-second, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alec Tris LLC. Application remove the condition, the previous Z B A decision that prohibits the subdivision of this lot. This is removed, proposed three-lot subdivision would be applied for, this property is located R one ten zone, this is at ten seventy-five East Main Street. Is the applicant here on that?
Yes, I'm here.
You wanna just, I know we can't take testimony at this point, but just let the board know what we thought.
Yeah, okay, very simple, this is at the corner of, uh, East Main Street and Frost Road. Uh, it's a one point six six acre parcel back in nineteen eighty-one, which was a few years ago. Uh, the, uh, board, this, this board, the zoning board, granted a variance to the previous owner to cut off the back part of this property along Frost Road with two, uh, two lots at fourteen thousand square feet each.
What was that, say that again, how many square feet?
Fourteen thousand square feet where, at, in R one ten zone where twenty thousand square feet is required. Make a long story short, this, this, your board, your previous or your predecessors, approved two thou- fourteen thousand square foot lots. Uh, then the previous owner went to the planning board, got planning board approval, subdivided those two lots and cut them off from the property. Uh, about five years ago, uh, my client, uh, purchased what was left, which is one point six six acres. Uh, and then after we, after he purchased it, uh, we came to this board, uh, to show that the house, which is, was built in the early part of the century, of, of the twentieth century, uh, met the criteria to be converted to a two-family house. Uh, this board approved it, and, uh, when you go to the site, you'll see what a beautiful job he did to, uh, create the two-family house. Uh, the, the property is immaculate. Uh, anyway, make a long story short, one of the conditions when they, when this board approved the two fourteen thousand square foot lots, uh, they said that the front lot, which had one point six six acres where twenty thousand square feet is required, uh, would, could not be for the subdivided, so we're asking, uh, that, that condition be removed, uh, so that we can create, uh, two eighteen thousand square foot lots and still leave thirty-two thousand square feet left for the, uh, two-family house.
That's where everybody's worried, this house is right near the library on East Main Street.
Right across from the lot, that's where it was converted.
Where would, where would these lots be located, they, would they be on Frost or would they be on Houston?
Yes, they, they would front on Frost Road, yes, that's correct.
Now, right now, the lot consists of the two-family house that was, that we, that we gave the, that the variance on was, the variance also was for a third dwelling on the property, which is the bungalow back. So right now, there were three families on that set.
Correct.
Three family dwelling.
Two family and, and a cottage, that's correct.
So...
Would the cottage remain or would that be altered?
Uh... No, the cottage will remain, it's, it's a...
It's, it's addition, Bob, it's additional subdivision.
Okay, I didn't know whether the square footage incorporated that or not.
Well, yes, in other words, the way, what, what we're proposing is on Frost Road in the back part, the south part of the property, two eighteen thousand square foot lots, uh, and of course, right next to that, of the two fourteen thousand square foot lots that, that this board approved. Uh, and then the front part, which would contain approximately thirty-two thousand square feet, that's where the two-family, uh, house that you approved and the cottage. So you have three families on, uh, thirty-two thousand square feet and then two eighteen thousand square foot lots.
Bob, it's kinda similar to, uh, reflecting better precedent. Remember Spirelli one we did last year, or two years ago?
Yes.
Where we, we also had no further subdivision? It's the same process, what we'd have to do is we'd have to unanimously vote to reopen it in order to address the issue of whether remove that language.
Right, correct.
Now, before we, before we move to reopen it, we gotta be presented with information as to why we should just reopen, other than just because they want us to.
Correct.
The request is for the next meeting is we're gonna refer this to the billing department, planning department, we're gonna ask the prior decisions of the boards, we can review those decisions to see if there's any reasoning in there as to why that decision was done the way it was done.
But...
There's also a prior subdivision map that was also prepared that we'll need a copy of as well, and also the file for the property will be, will need.
Uh, I will get you, I believe part of my application, I have the, the zoning board decision from nineteen eighty-one, but I will also get you the copy of the, of the subdivision to fourteen thousand square foot lot.
I know this is, meeting isn't open as far as that hearing, this is your application, but what size, what size homes, what square foot is you intending to put on those fourteen?
Basically, we're, we're talking about, uh, some houses similar to the, uh, houses on Frost Road. Uh, you're talking about a house that's maybe a twenty-four by forty-five, uh, with a garage.
What, about eighteen hundred, two thousand square feet?
A little bit less than that, yes.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna need the, the nineteen eighty-one decision as well as the two thousand sixteen decision, and also that filed subdivision map that's there showing what, what's already permitted.
The file subdivision map, Joel, is, uh, two oh eight two oh, this is the R O number.
It's all in the Z B A file, Kira has it.
Uh, we have it already, I have, uh, Robin was nice enough to send me a copy of that.
Okay.
I have that, so I'll get, uh, either Robin or I will get you all the additional information before the public hearing.
Okay, so for that being said, we'll set it down for a public hearing on the twenty-second, which at that point, we have to first decide by vote whether or not to reopen it or not, so that's what we'll do.
All right, and if there's any other, oh, I have another question, Gordon. Uh, since this is a corner lot, do we have to put up two signs, one on each, facing each road? That's what I figured, okay.
Yes.
All right, so Robin, if you can let me know when I can pick up those signs.
That would be from Town Hall.
Oh, okay.
Joel, you can contact me, um, and then we'll set, we'll set up a meeting.
Oh, okay, Kira, you got it, all right.
All right, thanks.
All right, I'll make...
Okay, so I move to adjourn this April twenty-second, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we'll see you there and have a happy holiday if I don't see you.
Thank you.
Enjoy, take care.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on is Singular Wireless. Application for special use permit to modify an existing A T and T telecommunication facility by replacing three existing antenna and indoor equipment at three forty Ellington Road. So that's the, uh, free, that's one of the first cell towers we actually approved way back when at the Shiva property. So looking to do some changes to it. Uh, the application I would note for that is actually in the file that I have, I don't know if everybody else has it. But I have the application, I have, I think, the survey of the property, uh, and this, and the secret form. So what I'll do is refer that to the billing department. Um, no need for site visits or existing cell tower, anything else anybody thinks we need?
Ju- just a curious question, as to, as to why do they have to come back if, if it's the same application and they've been approved, all they're doing is upgrading their equipment?
The, um, the code says that basically you need a special permit even to modify it, period.
Okay, okay.
It's very, it's, it's just the way it's written, it's very clear, uh, but you're right, I mean, it's, it's just seemingly just swapping out antennas of similar signs, et cetera.
I have an education, thank you. Well done.
So we will refer this to the billing department, set it down for public hearing on the twenty-second, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, do, are we doing a slide on this one? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
You can try, but it's a hard property to get into, as you know.
No, I got you, never mind, got it.
Okay, the next move to the adjourned agenda first on is Carvallo. If anybody's here on that, the applicant asked if that be adjourned, so we're gonna adjourn that to next month. The next application is Grace, that's also being adjourned to next month at the applicant's request. Next on is Maressi. Application for special use permit for home office at three hundred, there's seventy-six of the town code at five thirty-five Jerome Road. Applicant here on that?
Yes, I am.
Here he is.
Hello.
You're not the same applicant who was here last month?
No, but, um, that's my, my engineer.
Okay.
He, he, he's wanting to be here now, he should be here now.
No problem.
Oh, he is.
So this is a continued hearing. Um, last month, we had some issues that we needed addressing. One of them was that we were discussing is whether or not a showroom qualifies as home office. And I believe that the applicant has somewhat changed, you correct me if I'm wrong, changed the application, that it's still a home office application, but you're not seeking to quote-unquote use it as a showroom because you're not gonna be bringing anybody in to actually view it for that purpose. Uh, any such viewers, we've done strictly virtually, is that correct?
That's correct, Pete, if you want, you wanted to just answer the question, but for everything, but yeah, that, that, that is correct, there'll be nobody going in the house, everything will be done virtually.
There was a letter to the file dated March third, uh, since the applicant's here, I'm not gonna read the entire letter, but basically, I'm summarizing what the letter said. So if there's anything else you wanna add to that, feel free.
No, it, it summed up everything ni- nicely.
We also received a letter today, or actually memo, signed by, I'm not sure if it's all, but many of the, uh, residents of that area, the Jerome Road area, pretty much in opposition to the application. Uh, I'm not, is anybody here on that? Any of the neighbors here?
Yes.
Found a letter?
Yeah, I'm the author.
I don't wanna read the entire letter, but if you wanna summarize it, you can state your name and go ahead.
Sure, hi, Charlie Lucino, um, yes, basically, the, uh...
I'll choose one second, Mr. Lucino, the letter will be part of the record in any event, but...
No, I understand, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I, I certainly am not gonna repeat it, but you asked me just to, to hit, to comment the points. So, um, I was here the last time and, uh, stated many things that the, the board and you in particular uh, made reference to, and so we now did understand that Mr. Maressi has, uh, changed it somewhat, as you've just indicated for the record. Uh, the problem is, uh, that as I've said in my statement, the genie is out of the bottle. Following, uh, a interview that was given by Mr. Marissi and his, uh, engineer that was in the Yorktown News, uh, touting the house and what it was going to be and, uh, this new technology, that in the next few days, there were at least thirty to forty cars going up Jerome Road looking for the Tesla house. Where's the Tesla house? So the problem is that it, it's already out there. And, you know, Mr. Marressi in the article talks about he wants his privacy and no one can see the house based on the shrubbery he's gonna put in. We neighbors don't have that same luxury, we didn't build our houses in such a way on these inadequate roads that we wouldn't have, you know, the, the expression is the looky-loos, people who are naturally curious, and the technology is, I think, a really wonderful thing. It's, it's great, and we do need to look at this, but not hidden away. We need it to be somewhere in a commercial zone where people can see what it is. If someone's gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would imagine they wanna see what it is. And what we really sort of believe here is that this is not a home office that's being requested. The entire house, as the engineer noted in the article, it's integrated, it's the house that is the subject, it's a commercial enterprise. Um, Mr. Marressi indicated he is an investor in this type of energy. He certainly, I, I think it's a good thing he wants to do it, it's just the location is a poor choice. And, you know, the, the fact that, uh, this is really a use variance is, is what it should have been styled as and what it should have been presented to the board. It's not a home office that has less than twenty-five percent, it's the entire building. And on that basis, we strongly, uh, believe that despite the, uh, indication that there aren't gonna be people who are actually come to the property, nonetheless, as, as the movie quote goes, if you build it, they will come. And they have already come, and they're looking for it. And that is not a, a use that should be permitted in this neighborhood. I attached photographs that show the school bus trying to turn around, uh, you know, it, it just doesn't work here. Again, I applaud Mr. Marressi for what he wants to do, it's just the choice of the location. That, that is essentially our, our opposition.
I understand what you're saying, but I wanna say, speaking practically about it though, is for argument's sake, if we denied it and said, no home office, you can't have the home office permit, which is all they applied, it's only a home. The house is only in front of us to, to approve or not approve a home office permit. We're not here to approve the house itself. So if for argument's sake, if we denied the home office use permit, he can still build the house, anything he wants, as long as it fits code. So as far as people coming to see it, that component may still be there, would, be there whether we approve it or not. Uh, so that will kinda stuck with either way.
And I also, I also will add, I also will add that right now, yes, it was in the paper, and yeah, it's a Tesla house. Everybody gets excited with that, but with the passage of time, if it's not in the paper, no one's really paying attention to it, you're not gonna see it. You can't see it from the road, there's no point to going there, so there's no reason for why people would wanna see that.
Well, I think the...
The other thing that they mentioned was that the improvements that they were gonna make to that Jerome Road are significant in that turnaround for the buses right now, we've been told that it's hard for the buses to turn around, it's very hard to do. Um, all these other concerns, I think, I think from a practical perspective, if they're good neighbors, I think, number one, you're not gonna see it, number two, they're gonna improve the, the turnaround for the people that do live there. So it's a matter of perspective as to how you, as to how you're looking at it. I don't disagree with your concerns, but I think it's premature, I don't think it'll be long-term, that's...
Let me address what you just said, Bob, because first off, I, I know what you're saying about people looking that dies down, the problem is that unless they know you can't see it from the road, they're gonna come and try and look for it anyway, which is one of the problems. People came to look at it before it's even built, because they just, they heard about it in the newspaper. Uh, the other thing, the other concern I have, even, even if the applicant puts in a turnaround point for buses, um, and we're kinda moving into a different area here, but it's a private road if he does that, it's his property. And then you have a different liability issue with allowing the public to use a private, his private road for public access. Who's gonna maintain it?
But they're doing that now. They're doing that now.
They are, but technically, it, it's, it's, it's a private road that no one has the permission, so to speak, to use it. If you purposely put it in as a turnaround and it's your personal road, you're liable for it. And then you're carrying any, you know, liability problems that, that could arise with it, it may be no problems.
The same liability...
But we live in a very litigious world.
As it is now.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out that anywhere you go with it, you have another problem that could crop up.
I understand.
You, you're not dealing with a public road that you can just widen and still have it as a public road. Anything that the applicant does is great, and I applaud him for it, but there's liability attached to it, that's not the town's, it's his own. So it's a question of whether or not even, even a bus company, they know it's a private road, so they wanna start using it to turn around on it.
You know how that works.
Yeah.
The path, the path of least resistance.
Well, exactly.
And, and, and if I may, you know, presumably, um, Mr. Marressi, the reason he wants this technology, not only for his own enjoyment, but it's a commercial application, as it's indicated in the article, that people are going to learn about it and they wanna sell it. I, I assume that's, that is ultimately the goal, not the house, but the technology. And so it's gonna attract visitors to their site, I assume, again, I don't know. Is the site gonna say where it is, is it gonna say it's in, on Jerome Road in Yorktown Heights, New York? I, I don't know that. Once it does that, you know, we all know, when it's on the internet, everybody knows it's there, and they come to see it. Even once, assuming it's built, even if they don't know they can't see it, that...
Right, that goes, but that goes back to the point I was saying before, that even we're saying you can't have the home office, he can still build a house. Anyway, whether Tesla technology or not.
I, I agree he can build a house, but the question is, can he operate a commercial business that is the house?
Can, can you, can, can he build a test site? I mean, if he builds the house as a test site, and basically...
It's meeting the code require, if it's meeting the code requirements of a residential home, there's nothing to stop it.
Then there's nothing that can stop that, exactly, and so if he's gonna use the data that he garners, he's using a sixty-four hundred square foot for a particular sized roof and a, and a style of roof that they're making and and different applications with the windows and whatnot, I'm assuming at this point, it's not necessarily marketable, it's more about the data that they're going to assess
Correct.
the experience living in the east, that's my, that's my interpretation. So I don't really see how they can market this product without doing their, their testing. How long is the testing gonna take? Probably five years at minimum before you really know whether it's a viable application for use in the future.
So...
If it's not advertised, if it's not advertised, no one really, you know, the public attention's about, is about this why. And, and if it's not advertised, it's not in the papers, they're not gonna come looking at it, I mean...
I understand that, but again, my concern, and I, I don't know that we're addressing that, and is, yes, he can absolutely build the house, it's what he does with it. If he's going to market it as the technology and that that is out there and that it's indicated that this is a house that is on Jerome Road in Yorktown Heights, New York, that's, that's the worry.
No, that, that's not, that's not what I'm doing at all. Basically, to, to sum it up really quickly, that, this is my own personal home, it's not a quote-unquote Tesla house. The only thing Tesla about the house is that it has a solar roof on it, that's pretty much it. Um, you know, they have other technology coming in, in, in the, in the future later on that I'd like to integrate, hopefully, and net coming down the line, but as far as it being a Tesla house, it's just the roof. And as far as my home business, I, I, um, primarily operate a, a holdings fund, I, I pretty much, uh, day trade and do stocks, stuff like that, and, and I have, um, I, I deal with a lot of paperwork, so pretty much, um, my, that home office, the office is gonna be, it's a giant empty storage space where I'm gonna be using it for papers and a desk and about a couple of TVs, so I can watch, you know, like four different stock market channels. That's the office of my house. I, I have two assistants that I work with that deliver mail for me back and forth, you know, uh, you know, that deliver boxes, you know, maybe once a week, twice a week. That's about it, I'm not planning on having people come to the house, as the house is being built, it's gonna be filmed, it's gonna be, you know, um, uh, documented from, from start to finish. And then, uh, P W's for engineering is gonna be going forward and looking into, you know, the, uh, marketing, either... either building a, a, a separate house as, as another whole unit, you know, um, and adding in different parts of aspects of technology, if you wanna add in a solar roof. If you wanna add in, you know, an electric floor, if you wanna add, you know, there's all different customizable assets. But basically, this house is basically, it's a proof of concept. It's to see if we could do it. If I could build it, if I could build it under a certain, un, under a certain budget and it's scalable and we're gonna film it, then, then Mr. Scott and myself, we're gonna, are gonna, of course, go on down the road. Hopefully, in a couple of years from now, as the technology gets further and further along and bring this to other people. But as of right now, this is a pure experimental proof of concept, my own personal home, I'm building this for myself. I'm just basically building myself a house, I'm putting a solar roof on it, that's really what I'm doing.
Are you doing anything with the windows? I mean, last meeting-
No, the window, window, uh, basically, it's, it's just, it's just one, it's um, um, the one glass side is uh, is all glass in, in the back of the house. You know, facing the back, everything, everything else is nothing, you know, special of the glass. Pete, if you wanna elaborate on anything, um, as far as what we're using.
Alright, we're getting a little off track.
Yeah. What, the, the other concern I have is dealing with code section three hundred dash seventy-six, which the, the very first sentence of it says, it's the intent of this section to allow for the use of an existing residential structure for professional offices. So, my concern is, is the application to us premature because the structure's not built yet? And the code specifically says existing residential structure. And if that be the case, then isn't the applicant then asking us to vary what the code says? In which case, you'd have to file an application for variance, not only a permit.
Well, if I might speak, uh, Peter Scott, uh, I went over that with the billing department. Uh, and uh, what we discussed is the fact that because uh, it's paramount to have a accessory, uh, uh, the office, uh, home office in this building, uh, we have to resolve that issue because uh, if it went the route of we applied later on after a, a very large uh, uh investment of funds and it was denied, uh, it would take away a, a major right of my-
I, I understand that completely, I don't disagree, I, I understand it, I don't disagree that you need to know these things before you invest the money. All I'm saying is, is if that's the case, then it should also, in my mind, have been besides an application for a special use permit, also an application for a variance, for us to vary the code, allow it to be, that allow us to grant it in a building that's not yet constructed.
Didn't, didn't we address that at the last meeting? Didn't we ask a town, uh, uh, the, the attorney to take a look at that?
We didn't really flesh it out all that much.
I can speak to it, you know, quickly. In, in my view, that doesn't mean that the structure must be existing for the special permit to be issued. Now, the special permit can be issued certainly conditioned upon construction and compliance with the approved site plan, which is implicit. Um, but I don't have any, I, I don't, I don't read it that way.
I'm just reading the exact wording of the code, that's what it says.
No, I understand, I understand the word, I, I, but I don't take that to mean that the structure must be existing for the special permit to be issued.
That, that, that's the question, that's, that's, you know, that's my concern.
Does that mean that, that you can build it in compliance with the code as far as, as far as a home office?
Well, I think what, what, one condition of your approval could be uh, that before the home office is occupied, we file for CO with the, with the town in regard to-
They have to anyway.
Well, what you could do is you could, you could, uh, one of the concepts is, the house could have a CO and then you could get, uh, uh, shortly afterwards, get a, a C sub C of completing the um, office space, home office.
The, the point is, in, in my view, it might be the point is, the use is not authorized until the structure is completed. But the permit can be granted condition on the structure being constructed and in compliance with the site plan approval.
Well, you can't, you can't have a home office use in use before this, before the house is there anyway.
Of course.
Yes.
The, the use will not be authorized by the special permit until the building is constructed. But that, that, I don't take that to mean that the special permit cannot be granted.
I'm just concerned with the wording being as, as explicit as it is. Why is, why is the word existing put in there? Or is it just a residentialized structure?
Because the, well, because I think the, you have no use until the structure is built.
Well, correct.
That's, that's the way I read it, I mean, which is obvious, right? But again, I, I don't think that, I don't, I don't, I don't take that to mean that the permit cannot be granted until the place is constructed.
That's, that, that's one of the-
What would, what would the verbiage be, how would you restrict that? How would you, how would you be able to define that?
I would, I would condition it upon construction and compliance with the site plan, the planning board has already approved. But, but ultimately, that's, that's implicit, right?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I mean, you, you can't use it if it doesn't exist, right? So, if, it, it doesn't say it's the intent of this section to allow the granting of a special permit for an existing residential structure. It says allow for the use of an exa, existing residential structure. So, I agree with Adam on that, uh, we can allow for that, uh, we can grant the permit to allow for the use, but the, the building must exist for the use to occur, that's it.
Well, building, of course, would have to exist, that, that would-
And that, that's what the intent of this section is, that, you know, a building must exist for this to be used like this.
With your point, when you come back to it, is there a limitation on the size of a home office in an existing building?
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
No more than twenty-five percent.
So, so if that's defined within the application for a new, for a new house, can't that be uh, so restricted?
Well, that's why I'm-
It would have to be restricted to that, I'm, I'm not talking about the restrictions, other restrictions in the code. That would have to follow also along with parking plans and that sort of thing. I'm trying to get past the first sentence of the code.
But it, but it doesn't say we can only grant a permit for an existing structure, it says we can allow for the use. So, what, I agree with Adam, why, why can't we allow for the use at any time? Uh, the, the building must exist for that to occur.
My problem is this, if logic dictates obviously that you can't use it if it doesn't exist, then why, what's the necessity of the word existing in the sentence? Why not just say in a residential structure?
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
If the word existing didn't mean something.
That's, that, so that should be counsel's answer.
No, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to go along with, with uh Gordon on this. It says it's an existing structure, then you make an application. Um, making an application for its, uh, uh, structure that does not yet exist doesn't seem to be compliant with the code.
It doesn't, it doesn't, just to be clear, it doesn't say that the application must come after the structure exists.
Yeah, but the granting of the home office can only be made when the uh, the structure exists. So, they can put the application in.
Doesn't say that either.
That's the question, that's the question, and the code doesn't say that. In my view, the code does not say that, just to be clear.
You can, you can make application, but you can't add on the application until there's an existing structure. That's how I'm interpreting it.
Right. Otherwise, why have the word existing in there? We know it can't be done unless the thing's existing. That'll go right against logic, otherwise, the question is, why, why they put the word existing in sentence if it didn't mean anything?
Well, uh, if I may interject, um, as an example, we were giving a, we were given a major power generation permit by the planning board without a building there, and we have a permit for that, and there's no building yet.
Depends on what that section of the code says, I'm reading a specific section of the code.
Right.
That's what the language says.
But we would, we would be more accepting, we, we, we would accept a resolution which indicates or reiterates the fact that it has to be existing uh, in some form.
Of course, because you can't, you can't have a home office in a non-existent building.
That's great. So, so we, we would be more than happy to put uh, in the resolution, uh, uh, reiteration of this regulation, basically indicating that we have an existing home to put it into. And that's why I'm saying you could get a CO on the house and have that home office just an open space.
All, all, all I'm saying is, there's a reason why the word existing isn't there. And my recollection of being on this board for as many years as I have, and we have never done a home office permit for, for a residential structure that wasn't already built, that's all I'm saying.
Have we ever had an application in your, your experience, Mr. Fine? Have we ever-
No, I'm saying, I've never seen one that in a, in a building that wasn't built.
This is, this is a, a new, this is new territory.
Dude, this is a good thing.
And if you understand the regulation, the way I'm looking at it, it's for an existing house.
Correct.
It was, and I think most people, it's, it's designed as for a residential use and putting an office into a residential house that already exists. This is, this is a similar idea in that they're building a residential house and they wanna be able to put an office in it when they build it.
Otherwise, they would put, they would say you have to go into a mixed-use zone, we could have residential and commercial combined. If you build it ahead of, if you, if you're planning to build it ahead of time. Here, this, here this specifically says existing residential structure. Well, the, the whole- You know it has to be existing.
The, the whole purpose of the home office is pretty much, it's the, the whole idea of the house is being um, as in a new COVID world, as in a home, you can, you now, you can now, if you wanna build a home, you can now build a home with a home office in it.
I'm not addressing, I'm not addressing the house itself in any way, I'm not saying the house is bad, the house, I'm not addressing that.
No, but all I'm saying is the application itself. So, I'm saying, going forward, you might be getting a lot more applications with people that wanna build houses with an extra office in it because of the new work-for-home attitude, that's all.
In my mind, then the town board has to change the code to be more explicit to say that. I have nothing, nothing wrong in my, a lot of people working from home these days.
Yeah.
That's what, but that's not what the code says, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And that, and what you're saying applies to an existing house.
So, here, here's another uh, s- statement in the code on the same section. It says, uh, architectural treatment of any structure containing such use shall be in harmony with the abutting residential development. So-
That's it, you wanna put a sign up for it or something? For your home office? They're not saying you wanna put a roof on your house, it's-
Yeah, I'm, I'm a-
But I'm saying like, that, that, that implies something that doesn't exist. If, if you're worried about the architectural treatment.
An architectural treatment could be a sign, you don't put the sign up before the office is there. Architectural treatment is, is not necessarily structural.
Another question I got is if we're gonna uh, build this, this house and there's gonna be a large vacant space that's intended to be utilized for a, a, a office space. It's an in-home, why do you need a, a permit at all?
Oh, that's what we have.
If all you're gonna use it is to store paperwork and, and, and perform-
Well, because you have employees coming in too.
I'm, I mean-
Two employees.
If you, if you consider my, my, my two cousins that are my assistant's employees, and yeah, I guess maybe I do, once we pick up my man. Yeah, I, I get it, I, 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 I get what you're saying.
But I think that's a valid uh, question. You know, we're all working from home now, uh, I could work from home all the time and I have no special permit.
So, let's all ignore the code and go our merry way, that we don't have to be here.
Well, I, I think the applicant is trying to do the right thing and protect his interests, yeah.
I understand that, so am I. We have to have an, we have to have a decision that not only makes sense to us, but also makes sense legally. And it has to be, to my mind, bulletproof if anybody wants to challenge it in that sense, if it goes before another court. That says, hey, that's not code sense.
Would we need this, to refer this to the town board, to ask them for a decision in this instance?
No, the, the section is what it is, we have to interpret it this way.
Well, the town board-
They're free to change the code if they want.
Can they vary as they, as, as they want, or?
They could change the code, they'd have a public hearing and change the code if they want.
Can they change it for an individual?
I doubt it.
No.
That's spot zoning.
Aren't we doing it now?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying is, this is really a variance, in my mind, asking for variance to have the permit issued before the place is existing.
So, could we amend this uh, application right now to include a variance?
You'd have to renotice it for a variance. I have no objection to noticing it, but I'm just saying I think it's necessary, you know, I'm saying we'll deny it because it's saying-
So, from a, from a, from a legal perspective, as to what the code says, by the letter of the law, of the code, we have to do it that way.
And if we're not being exactly code compliant, then it's a variance, which means an application for a variance.
But I, I, I bring up the question then, if it's a variance, how do I, how do I work out the hardship criteria? Uh, uh, which is somewhat a statute to evaluate.
With a spec, with a special permit, you don't need criteria for, I guess, you don't need a uh, uh-
Hardship criteria.
Hardship criteria for special permit per se.
Right.
Thing that, the thing that's interesting is unfortunately, Tony was talking about being old before we started. And uh-
Now he's even older.
Oh, he's much older, yes, time has gone by, this has aged terribly.
About being that old is the fact that I was, I was uh, you know, very, very personally involved in the creation of this thing back in the seventies.
Code section, you mean?
Yeah. And uh, one of the reasons why it was created, quite frankly, was because of the fact that your work was a uh, you know, a, a plethora of houses that were being used for doctors' offices and real estate agencies because at the time, there wasn't commercial space available to uh, allow a lot of these uses. And uh, there was a recognition that basically these houses needed to have some kind of control. So, as a result, this ordinance was created with a lot of the language that still exists. One of the things that they didn't think about, as Gordon brought up, was the fact that you were going to have or construct a house with a professional office in it. Well, I can see some of the argument certainly about the use not existing prior to the house being created. I can definitely see that. And uh, right now, I'm still kind of trying to struggle with uh, whether or not you actually need to go through the variance route to allow this particular application to uh, continue. And I'm just wondering, does the applicant, at this juncture, understanding that he meets most of the criteria for a special permit, does he need to have a decision, a positive decision on this application in order to proceed with this construction?
It, everything's a risk. I mean, typically, we work in the business where we have to, we, we have deliverables. Uh, and while we have all the permits now in place with the town, in fact, we're taking trees down uh, next week to start the house. Uh, everything that could be construed is a risk moving forward if you didn't have the uh, uh, a acknowledgement that this component of construction above the garage will ever serve as a, a purpose. Cause it's basically, it's a square foot cost. Uh, we meet every criteria with the home office, the size, parking, it's all been evaluated by, by both the town engineer and the planning board. So, all those were evaluated because we had to go for site plan and uh, and amended subdivision approval with the package itself. And we've, we've gone to the billing department as well when we first did this project. Uh, and we were uh, referenced positively by him when I went to the planning board, uh, we, and we talked about this.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I think, you know, basically, we all know the special permit, if you meet criteria, the rule is, is that you can get the special permit. And what I'm looking at here is uh, you know, the criteria that you've gone through in terms of the uh, the planning board approvals, in terms of everything else that you, you, you've uh, managed to overcome. That at the end of the day, if this house was standing right now, that you would be granted the special permit. And I think the zoning board would be uh, would, would, it would be tough for the zoning board to deny that application.
So, so, so if we formally go through the criteria-
I think we're trying to say that in a lot of ways, we were trying maybe not to have to go down that road. But I'll be perfectly honest, I don't really see an issue with the approval of this. The only hurdle is whether it's an existing house or not. So, if you build the house and come back and apply for it, personally, I don't see it as being an issue unless the size of it is somehow in non-compliance.
And I guess what I'm saying, Bob, is that, that, that it seems like from all the information that I'm looking at, that the special permit criteria has been met with the proposed construction. And the issue really is, at this juncture, that very singular sentence that Gordon is talking about. That says existing structure.
And it's the first sentence of the code.
And, and I guess what I'm asking the applicant is that given the uh, the fact that he meets all that criteria, is it, would he consider constructing the house and then coming back and asking for the special permit?
But I, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, Mr. Marisi should answer that, uh, he's on this uh, um- Uh, Mr. Maresi should answer that, uh, he's on this uh, uh, conference.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, honestly, it, honestly, it, it's no problem, if you want, I would, I would rather have it. Uh, move forward and then we can just comply later, I mean, pretty much, we're in line with everything that, that everything has been asked for, so. I, I have no problem going, go, going forward with that. As, as long, as long as we're in compliance with everything, Pete, I'm, I'm good.
Could I adjourn this application then, for a, a, a extended period of time? And, and what is, what is, what is the exact definition of an existing house? When do I come back?
When you get a C O.
Yeah, to live in it.
Okay. So we, we could adjourn this, I could just come back when I get a C O, cause I, I'm starting construction.
I personally have no problem if you want to pull this from, well, not pull, not pull it from the agenda, but. Uh, we'll take it off the agenda, but keep it active, so that you don't have to reapply.
Yeah.
So, wh- what is the projected time for completion of the house, six months?
Yeah, six to, six to seven months, I'll be finished.
Seven months, so we could adjourn it for six to seven months.
Yes, and I could keep.
Well, we don't have to adjourn it, we could, we can just keep it inactive until the applicant tells us it's ready.
Yeah, it'll come up every month, right?
Yes. And I'll just notify you, that we, where we're at, I get, I'll get a letter from the billing department saying I have a C O, and I'll just basically appear with that in hand.
Yeah.
Cool, Gordon.
Yeah.
There's another uh resident with their hand up.
I was gonna ask, if anybody else would say anything.
Yeah, um, Jed.
Yes, hi, good, uh, good evening, good evening, everyone, can you hear me well?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, great, great work uh by the board, I, I was listening to this and you took us around the world uh with this discussion. Uh, especially the last comment that was um made by Mr. Mizari. That he's willing to go ahead with it, but I'd like to just shed some light on four topics, four items, if you give, allow me just a chance to speak about them. Uh. We're hurt a lot, but the logic, logic here prevails, right? And I kind of have a tendency to lean with the, with the, with the logic presented by. Uh, the chairman and Mr. Tripodi and a few others on the board regarding the existing, it's an existing, it's applicable to an existing. Residential property to be used for office space, that's the intent, and that's a naked. Someone who's not on the board. Would read it and say, that's the intent, and it kind of supports your arguments that I've, the, the arguments that I've heard. Now. As one, as ano- another neighbor mentioned, the genie is out, this is an application, and I'm not. Uh, and I like what I heard up to, up to now so far, and the, and the progress or the path that you guys are following. However, the genie is out, that this is what I consider, what I would interpret as a business. You are building. A house for a business purpose, you're using the house to do research, so the house is the business. So a dentist is not using. The roofing system, and I, and I, I don't wanna go into a lot of analogies, but I wanna make it as clear as possible. And have a san- sanitary type of discussion here, very clean. The focus on what's being presented to, in front of the board, what's being presented is, I wanna build this business. And share the research from this business. For monetary purposes, off to, to, for the industry's sake. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it very, you know, stand back, elevation, high altitude elevation, just think about what is being presented. It was in the newspapers, that's correct, it was discussed at the last board meeting in detail. This is a business and not a house, so I think putting it backwards now, build the house. And then apply for that kind of application. So. Um, so that's what I wanted to say, but somehow my, the wind, you got, some of you took the wind out of my sail on that. Um, it is, and the, another great analogy that I would say is, imagine a precast company says, I'm gonna build a house made out of precast concrete. And now the precast walls are going to be showpieces for my business. That's not a business, right, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, that would become a business. So this type of house really, if the board wants to look at it again. And ask yourselves, should this be in a commercial zone, like it was presented, that was suggested before? If you put it in a commercial zone, you could do all the research that you want, you could put all the panels, all the sampling. So. That's, that's again, my, you know, my perspective on it, and I just, you know, listened to you for a long time, you guys have been talking about it. In quite enough detail. Uh, from a naked point of view, and somebody wants to, that wants to share with the board, this, the comment. Is that clearly, the application started out as a business, now we're taking steps backwards. To say, no, let's build a house first, and then we'll, we'll see how we'll finagle a business out of it. So think about it. Think about it in that perspective, that's how it's presented to the public, that's how the public hears it, and it was a mistake to present it that way.
And forgive me if I'm wrong, forgive me if I'm wrong, and, and, and I could be out of line, but the interpretation that I get of the project is, it's a test site. It's a test house in a residential zone, guy's gonna live in the house, and he's gonna use the data that he gets from the house. To share it with possibilities going down the road, but it's a residential house.
Well, just, just.
I mean, that's.
If it was in a commercial zone, you wouldn't be allowed to live in it.
Exactly.
Well, it's already, certainly, as far as being a residential structure in the zone, it's already passed muster with the planning board. Uh, and the building department, they only sent us here for the, for the potential special use permit.
And, and the hangup is.
So that's all that's really in front of us.
Or use an existing house.
Well, that's why, that's why I say that you did go around the whole world on this, and you came to a conclusion right now to adjourn it. Until the house is built and then, so it, it's good, but initially, at the beginning of the meeting, I was very uh, you know, alarmed at. Some of the logic that's missing here, right? And I think we cleaned it up.
Anybody else have a comment, I appreciate, anybody else have a comment, is something we haven't gone over already?
Well, I have to make one quick comment if I may, yeah, we were granted a permit by the planning board for, as a major energy supplier. So we've gone through the route of making it, uh, allowing electricity to be generating. So we have all the rights to put the electricity into it, so it's really not the use of, is a problem. It'll be there, it'll be generating electricity, it's all compliant, it'll just be a matter of coming back to you and saying, in this approved house, we're gonna put a home office.
That's all I'm saying, is right now, you, you're only, you're only in front of us to grant you or not grant you a permit for a home office, we're not here to say you can't build a house.
It becomes a more typical application for a home office use. Of, you know, that any, anyone would do in any house, and you just have to demonstrate how you meet the criteria in the code.
Exactly.
Special permit, and we.
I think, I think we've done a wonderful job of getting to where we are, and uh. Gordon, I will accept the, the request for adjournment.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Well, that was.
I think we have another hand up.
Beautifully expressed.
Anybody else wanting to speak?
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Lynn and John Schroder.
Go ahead.
You're on mute.
Yeah. I thi- I think Harry Orneck wanted to get in on that, I think he had something to do about the electricity, he wanted to do something.
Don't go there.
Yeah.
Do you have somebody else wanting to speak?
Yeah, they unmuted for a second, and then it went back off, there we go.
That better?
Yeah.
All right, um, the, as I repeated from the last month, uh, I'm a technological idiot, so. Buttons confuse me, uh, to, to talk to the.
It's, it's bad to lead off that way.
Thank you.
Just give us your name for the record.
Your picture's not upside down.
John Schroder, five oh one Jerome Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Schroder.
All right, thank you. Um, I would just uh point out that um, this uh, the roof is more, there's more to this project than just the roof. The uh, the applicant has pointed out that the battery packs, the charging systems for the cars. Are all part of a Tesla package, so there's more to this than just the roof, I just wanted to point that out to you. Secondly, um, the offer to create a turnaround at the bottom of Jerome Road. Um, let's not forget the fact that the applicant has also indicated that they may construct a second house. And my guess is that they would be using uh, an old paper road um. That to access that piece of property, and that would be at the point where the turnaround is, so it's possible the turnaround could disappear. Uh, with the advent of the construction of a driveway down the road, uh, literally.
That's been before the planning board, that's, the planning board has addressed that, haven't they?
Yes.
I don't know if they, yeah, as I'm saying, it's, it's kind of going beyond where we are with this application.
Exactly.
Um, so anybody else have a comment before we move on and adjourn? Okay, then I would move at this point that we adjourn this application until the applicant tells us they're ready to proceed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I s- I see Ed Lachman's head, but he's like very bowed down, it's like, he's been like the fly on the wall this whole time.
He's pious, he's very pious tonight.
No, I, I do, I do my notes for the rest of the board, I actually send everyone a quick update, so I've. There was a lot to type on this one, so I have my head buried.
You, you were busy hacking away, all right, all right, I thought maybe you were just kind of ducking down, like, let's run with the ball.
Well, you know, some people, they might wanna take shots at me, but uh, I'll, I'll sit up for that.
Hey, our next application is Sindaco, application for special use permit for daycare center in Yorktown United Methodist Church at twenty-three hundred Old Crampon Road. Applicant here?
Yeah. Hi, how are you?
Good. Want to give us your name for the record again, please?
Yeah, my name is Melanie Sindaco.
And I'm on also the Josephina from Site Design Consultants, the uh, project engineer. I would note that we had, I had a notice that the mailings and uh, sign after they were all in order, so we could open the hearing. Uh, you want to just run us through the application?
Sure, um, Robin, can I uh, share, please?
We can see you, Joe.
Uh, yes.
That's not what he meant by that.
Are you sharing?
I'm sharing, okay. So, um, yes, the uh, the applicant is Melanie Sindaco of Little Red House. Uh, Westchester preschool. And um, she's proposing to uh utilize the United Methodist Church at twenty-three hundred Cr- Crampon Road. For a preschool use. Um, in two thousand, and, and that's um. At twenty-three hundred Crampon Road, which is basically across from the police station, this is the uh, this is the uh, site here. Uh. In uh, two thousand eighteen.
Jason's at a police station.
Across, across the. Across the road.
On the other side of the street, okay.
Across the road.
Yes. So in two thousand eighteen, uh, the, the zoning board. Uh, issued a three-year special use permit for the Montessori school to operate out of here. Uh, and at the time, they were operating at thirty students, and they asked for an additional eighteen, which was granted. Uh, that's set to expire, I think in May or June. And the proposal, um, they're no longer in operation there, and the proposal is for. Uh, Melanie, you know, to operate her preschool, to expand her preschool from uh, uh. Uh, her current use at Kear Street, and utilize the same space that uh, the Montessori school was using. Um.
Would, would, would the, would the school on Kear Street still be used?
Yes, the schools on Kear Street would still be used.
That was the other application on tonight, Bob, was the renewal of that one.
Right.
So you're looking to take the place of the Montessori school, or in addition to?
Um, so we're taking the place.
Okay.
Taking the place.
Is this also the application that's before the board for next month with Little Red Schoolhouse with the sign?
Yes, that's for the sign.
That's for the signs, okay.
But it's a different.
So, since, but, but since we're, since we're looking at the, at the, at the. Topographical view, looking down at it, show us where the signs wanna be, just to give us.
It's a different place.
It's, it's, the address is the same. It's twenty-three hundred Crampon Road.
No, Kear Street is renewal.
House, twenty-three hundred Crampon Road.
All right, gentlemen. John, Kear, Kear Street, Kear Street is renewal of an existing.
Yeah, but this is, but we have a new application for next month, but for Little Red Schoolhouse of twenty-three hundred Crampon Road. And we've got uh Sindaco tonight, twenty-three hundred Old Crampon Road.
Melanie, where are the, are those signs for this site, or Kear Street?
The signs are for the twenty-three hundred Crampon Road, so they're gonna go right where the old Montessori school sign was, which they were granted a variance for the same place. So if you're looking at the front of the church, it's sort of to the left of the driveway.
So it's right here?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Just going forward, we gotta be, you know, thinking about it.
Right. Uh. Okay, so uh, Melanie, create a, a nice little summary of some key points here, and I'll just go through them really quick. Um, you'll see the, the hours of operations, Monday through Friday, they wanna use four classrooms. Uh, total of fifty-eight children, eight staff members, and the ages are gonna range from eighteen months to nine years old. Um. We've got a diagram showing the, the emergency evacuation routes. Uh, similarly regarding of, uh, fire exits and um, dealing with. Fire protection, uh, that's all being accommodated, uh, there're gonna be fire drills. And I'll get to a diagram a little bit later on, that'll show you where that is, and again, we're talking about, there's gonna be fire drills where, where um. The children are gonna be. That, that's gonna occur on a, on a regular basis, uh, the staff is gonna have a plan on how to evacuate and where to evacuate to. Um. And on occasion, the students are not able to return to the building. Um, they're gonna look to the police department, which is across the street, to provide some safe shelter for, for the uh, for the students.
Has, 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 has either the police or the fire reviewed this?
Yeah, we have a memo, John, we have a memo, Bob.
Okay.
Um. The uh, building is fully equipped with, with a centrally monitored alarm system, um, there are fire extinguishers placed. Uh. Strategically throughout the building, and, and I'll show you that on the, on the diagram. As far as the parking goes, there's really, uh, really, uh, uh, minimal need for parking. Uh, parents are gonna be dropping off, they're only gonna be there a short time, there's seventy parking spaces. Um, that's, you know, quite, uh, quite a bit more than what's required, so I, I don't believe that parking is an issue. Um. So once the parents are parked, they'll drop. Uh, they'll drop off the students by entering the side door, which I'll point out to you, and um. So the estimate is fifteen cars between seven AM and eight AM, thirteen cars between eight and nine, and twelve cars between nine and ten. Similarly, the pickup is gonna be kind of the reverse. And you'll have ten cars between three and four, fifteen between four and five, and fifteen cars between five and six. Um, it's adequate toilet facilities for the students, it's, it's already set up, there's really. Uh, other than, other than making it look like their own, there's really nothing that they have to do to prepare for the students to, to occupy the space. Um, as I said before, they're gonna use four classrooms. Uh, three with sixteen children in each room, and one with ten children, uh, the ages will be between eighteen and nine.
Is this designed with the new, with the new covid uh, requirements for spacing?
So at our other sites, um, the, we follow all of the covid requirements, and we're very familiar with them, preschool does not have the same covid requirements as K through twelve students do. So we don't have the six feet distancing and stuff, instead we have cohort sizes, um, so it's a little bit different, but yes, definitely, we have a.
So God forbid that we go back into this craziness that we've experienced for the last year or so. Is there a preparation to be able to handle that, to handle the distancing as far as?
The requirements are different for preschool age children than they are for the older kids, so even when, because this is an essential business, there was never a sort of a stop. On childcare and preschool, and the um, sort of, you know, distancing and, and stuff like that, other than our staff wearing masks, and of course, very stringent cleaning requirements and stuff, there wasn't. Ever a distance um, sort of motion put in front of us at any point.
Okay, is there, is, all right, to be stupid, I apologize, I appreciate what you're telling me, is there, is there an anticipation that the situation could be. Uh, adjusted to, to um, adhere to something restrictive, could we, could we, is there, is there any anticipation for, for that going down the road?
Yes, because the rooms are larger than what we would need, so we're putting sixteen children per room to, so to follow state requirements and guidelines, we're not actually maxing. We're not actually maxing out the maximum capacities for the room, so if we.
So no, normal capacity for the rooms would be what?
Um, well, it depends. Each room is a little bit of a different size. We're putting sixteen kids in each room and we could round about do eighteen in a room. So where we are left roughly with seventy-five extra square feet per room than we would need.
Okay.
Okay, um, there's an existing outdoor playground, which is fully fenced in, that's gonna be utilized. Uh, staff will be trained with all the requirements, uh, that they need to be. There'll be no transportation provided, uh, the children will be dropped off by the parents to the school. So this is a close-up, uh, close-up view. Again, this, this is where the drop-off is gonna occur over in, in this location here. That's the side door, uh, which the parents will, uh, enter to drop off the, uh, students.
Is this the same plan that Montessori used?
Yeah, I'm gonna show you that. Um, the, the, uh, door, of course, is coded. So, uh, the parents, no one can get in without, uh, um, putting in a code, uh, open the door. Um, uh, this is, this is the plan that shows all the safety devices, uh, location of all the safety devices, fire extinguishers, exits, pull stations, assembly points, smoke detectors, so on and so forth.
So has this been modified to show an upgrade or is it pretty much the standard that was there before?
Um, Melanie, are you, are you adding anything or is it pretty much what's, what's there already?
Um, actually the church upgraded this right before we took the space, so this is actually a brand new system that's been installed, so this is called pre-toss.
This is a good time to read the memo from the fire inspector.
For sure.
Dated March fifth. On March second, I performed the annual fire and safety inspection of the Yorktown Methodist Church. During my inspection, I found no violations in state and local fire codes. At this time, I have no objection to propose continued use of the facility as a childcare center.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Um.
Let me also do the planning board memo while I'm at the memos.
Okay, go ahead.
That's dated March fifteenth. Planning board is meeting of March eighth, discuss the proposed Little Red House child daycare center at the subject location was previously occupied by another school for many years. The same traffic and cer- the same traffic circulation and parking would be used. Planning board has no objections to the issuance of the special permit.
You, you, you should have read that earlier. I wouldn't have had to ask any questions.
You reminded me to read it by doing that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm glad I, glad I served the purpose, thank you.
Uh, we also have a memo from the building department dated March eighteenth from Mr. Landy. Um.
Where is he, by the way?
He's around somewhere. Application to amend, renew the existing special use permit for daycare centers to address. There'll be a total of fifty-eight children, three classrooms with sixteen and one classroom with ten. The last special use permit was for up to eighteen students in the daycare, in addition to the thirty students in the former Montessori school. The daycare will now be the only tenant. The school and daycare have been in use since the time it opened and he has no objections to the granting of the permit. Correct. Thank you, John.
This diagram shows the exit points, uh, assembly points and, uh, areas where the fire department will enter and, uh, park their vehicles as necessary. These are the, uh, four classrooms that will be used and listed in there is the distribution of the, of the, of the kids per group. Here you have school age and, uh, pre-K, pre-K toddlers, pre-K. Um, this is the entry point where the, uh, parents will, will do the drop-off from. Uh, this is, this is, uh, an additional exit point. That's not gonna be a primary entry or exit point.
What, what is the total number of students?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. And you're getting go to sixty? Is that the limit in Westchester?
Um, sorry, limit in terms of?
Of, of size of the school you're running? Is, 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 is there a limitation on size as to how many students you can have?
Um, there's only a limitation to the number of students you can have based on how many classrooms you're using, so, um, you know, if you had an additional ten classrooms, you could, you know, like there's one really large one, Yorktown has almost three hundred kids, so there's, you know, all different requirements.
Yeah, okay, alright. I'm, I'm still learning as I go, as I go through that, so thank you for that education.
A lot, it's a lot, I know.
Yeah.
So at, at the end of the day, um, nothing is going to occur, other than a new signage, nothing's gonna occur to change the site, the exterior of the site. Um, the site's gonna operate the same way it has been operating and there's just gonna be ten more children. Um, so from a, from a, uh, uh, visual or property, I mean, a, a neighborhood quality or character, uh, perspective, there's not gonna be any change there.
Let me, let me ask at this point, does anybody in the audience have any comments on the application? Do you have anybody, Robin?
No.
I see twenty participants, so I'm just, somebody's watching.
Well, most of them are us and the next applicant.
So, so in the back corner of the property, that's where the jacuzzi's gonna go for the teaching?
The sunniest spot on the, on, on the property.
Anybody in the board have any questions? It, it's a, it's a pre-existing site. They're really not changing anything. The planning board kind of made special mention of that.
Exactly. So on this picture, on this picture, wait a second. So on this picture, the signs, where the new signs are gonna go for next month, where would they be?
Right at the front left.
On, on right here at the end of the, at the end of the lot.
Right above the O.
On, on both sides.
Uh, it's gonna be on one side and it's gonna be, so yeah, right, see where this letter C is where it says Crampon Road?
Right.
So, okay, wait a second, oh, hold on. So it's not gonna be right where the driveway opens, it's gonna be up a little bit further. Oh, oh, this is actually perfect. You can see the old Montessori sign in this picture, so it's gonna be.
It's gonna be where the old sign was?
Exactly, it's gonna go right in the same place. And I told, um, Gordon, I'll make sure that I, um, put the zoning sign right where our new sign's gonna be, so that you can see.
And, and where's the, it says you wanna do two, is there two signs there or only one right now?
It's actually double-sided, so it's just, so you can see it from both.
So it's gonna be that, it's gonna be the same sign?
Yep, same sign, just double-sided.
Okay, cool.
Almost the same, almost the same colors.
Excellent, excellent, says it's a site, isn't it?
Okay, then. I would move then that we grant the application for special use permit for daycare center in York, Yorktown United Methodist Church at twenty-three hundred Old Crampon Road. Put the general conditions in here, Monday of operations, Monday to Friday, seven AM to six PM. Four classrooms, maximum fifty-eight children. Pickup and drop-off to be done per the plan submitted, the traffic circulation, parking to be the same as the previous applicant, that being the Montessori school when they were there. Anybody have anything else they want to add into the, uh, permit?
No.
Okay, we'll do that for a period of three years.
Three years.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks very much, everyone. Nice to speak, everybody.
Thank you all.
How was this to go on, Mr. Landy?
Okay, we have one left. That's Liboratory, application addition of the front yard setback of twenty-seven feet, five inches or a minimum of forty feet is required, four sixty-eight Granite Springs Road.
Evening.
And your name, please?
Paul Liboratory.
Okay, the mailings and sign affidavit were in order. Do you want to just give us a brief explanation of your application?
Uh, I also have my architect on here with us as well. I'm not sure if she wants to.
So yes, my name is Heike Schneider and I'm the architect for Liboratory, four sixty-eight Granite Springs Road. So, um, we are, so basically, um, yeah, we are requesting a variance, an area variance. Um, because, um, right now we have a setback or what we're proposing is twenty-seven feet, five inches away from the property line, but forty feet are required. So, um, we are requesting a twelve-foot, seven-inch, um, area variance.
What is the nature, what's the nature of the addition?
So we are proposing a second floor expansion. So the house is basically legally non-conforming. It's pre-existing and the house as it is right now is already only twenty-seven feet, five inches.
When was the house built?
Excuse me?
When was the house built? You said it's.
Nineteen fifty-three.
Code was existing in thirty-two.
It, it's, it's really interesting, but if you look at the old survey, which is really old, and I think you have a copy of it in front of you, um, it already shows it. It shows that it's legally non-compliant. So basically, we are proposing to, to enlarge the house just so slightly. So right now, the liboratories have the, a combined first and second floor. They have fifteen hundred square feet and we are expanding it to eighteen hundred. So we are proposing a three hundred foot, yes, yeah, three hundred square feet, um, expansion on the second floor to make it a decent, a decent, um, master bedroom.
What size is the lot? Is it a half acre?
Uh, yeah, about half acre.
Half acre?
Yeah.
Yep, uh, I see you have a floor plan submitted to the file, is that correct?
Yes.
Does everybody have that in their Dropbox?
Do you want me to share?
It's, it really, I mean, it's.
Sounds personal.
Uh, the most interesting is the second floor because we're not doing anything on the first floor. So, um.
The second floor is the proposed master, master bedroom and master bath?
Yes.
So it's the area that's marked off with, in the bold lines, correct?
Yes.
And that goes over to exist, piece of the house?
Yes, it is, yep.
You're not extending further out towards the property lines, front, back or something?
No, not at all, no.
There's some pictures of the house with the signs and, uh, looks like you're basically building above the garage, I guess it is there.
Can you put them up, John? Thanks, buddy.
This was taken three days ago, it's really hot, so.
Yeah, three days ago, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the, uh, the, the new roof will be just slightly higher than the existing roof?
Uh, yes, it is, because the existing roof is, is barely legal height. I think you have seven feet on the second floor.
And this is a continuation to the left? You're gonna square the line?
Yes, yes, yeah. And the ceiling height is gonna be a standard height, eight feet.
Eight foot. Side elevation from ground to roof, we're looking at what, eighteen feet, twenty feet?
Um, so to, to top of, I mean, I'm ne- never sure. I think for Yorktown, it's center of the roof line, right? So that you have, so on the left, it's nineteen feet two and I believe I'm seeing it actually on the cover sheet, um, what the new height is. I wanna say, let me, let me check. The new height is twenty-one feet, two inches.
Yeah, there's no height variance, so it's, so the height is fine.
The height is fine.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on the application?
Are we putting a front porch on as well?
No, that's the, that's the rear. We're just looking at the rear right now.
Okay.
No, we're not doing, yeah.
Robin, anybody want to comment?
I need to stop sharing because I can't see the list.
Okay.
That's no excuse, I mean, come on, you boy.
No, there's nobody else.
Anybody on the board have any other questions? We have a memo from the building department dated March eighteenth. The building inspector has no objections.
Thank you.
I mean, looking at the project, it's, it's gonna improve the way the structure looks. It's certainly not a detriment to the neighborhood. It's not out of character for the neighborhood, so I, I don't have a problem with it. Anybody on the board have any problems, questions? Alright, then I would move that we grant the application for an addition of the front yard setback of twenty-seven feet, five inches or a minimum of forty is required at four sixty-eight Granite Springs Road with the usual stipulations, that the addition be built in substantial conformity to the plan submitted and that the variance pertains to the requested variance and not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
John, now's the time to light up the cigar. It's like, you know, hour back at the end of the game, you know, for the Celtic games. Get that big, get that big cigar going before.
I think that was the last application we had on tonight.
Perfect, perfect, Jen, perfect.
Therefore, I would move at this point that we adjourn to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you all next month. Happy season.
Thank you.
Have a good month.
Everyone.